Good morning, everybody. It's 10:00 on 11/19/2019. Before we say the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like to just make one announcement. And I think all of you saw the news this weekend that Chief Justice of the Iowa Supreme Court, Mark Katie, died Friday evening. Chief Justice Katie was not originally from Story County, but he did serve first as a district court judge in the 2nd District, of which Story is the largest county. So he certainly touched the lives of Story County residents in that capacity. And he went on to the Iowa Court of Appeals and the Iowa Supreme Court, and most recently served as Chief Justice. I was familiar from my previous career, Chief Justice Katie's work. He was a good friend to many people. He was a great jurist, and he was a great leader in the state of Iowa. I would ask that you join me in a moment of silence in memory of Chief Justice Katie. Thank you very much. And now, if you would like to, please join us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Now, going on to our agenda, I would like to propose one other agenda item, and that we, it would be just a brief one. It would be for the Board to review what we're going to do for our next few meetings, whether we need to have some be claims only, or whether we can have full agendas. Because that, we made some decisions a couple of months ago, but we want to revisit them because we have some other meetings, or some other business coming up. And I would suggest that we do that between Items 8 and Items 9. Is that an acceptable change on the agenda?
Since that's normally an agenda item, to change them, are we just having a brief information discussion, and no discussion today, and then we'll do it next week? Is that what you're thinking?
Well, there's some things we may have to do next week, is the problem. We were asked for a letter of support for a grant application for Aeronet. That's why I thought, and I was just asked for that yesterday afternoon. So I didn't have time to get it on today's agenda.
Did we move officially that we are having a claims only next week? Okay.
It's in the minutes, Shelley?
Yeah. So my suggestion as an alternate might be for that item, unless Shelley would, I mean, you know, have a separate suggestion, is that we post for a special meeting at 9:45 next week to handle that grant application, and then go into our regular meeting. That's one way to handle it, to cover that we have already officially passed claims only. The other, you know, unless, Shelley, you have another idea there?
I guess I have a question. I mean, if we vote and determine we want to add something to the agenda next week, it would still be posted, so they would see that, that we have other items on the agenda.
My question is, can we make a decision here today, given we haven't put anything on the agenda? That's my real question, is, we normally put on the agenda that we would have a discussion about the upcoming agendas, the upcoming, what would be on them. So that's why I'm just trying to make sure we've got it in the right order.
Well, would you then want it at Item 13 as an upcoming agenda item, to be put on for next week's agenda?
Oh. That, thank you. That might be a solution to cover it under it?
We'll move this discussion to Item 13.
13, then.
Okay, we'll just do it then. The public will, the public is certainly getting notice that we're not having a claims only meeting next week, so I think that would be sufficient.
All right, super.
Okay, in that, in that case, we'll just do that, and I would entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
I move approval of the agenda with the addition for discussion under the upcoming agenda items.
Okay, and would you entertain that, just since that already is on 13, that we're actually good? So just move it as presented?
Yes.
And I'll second.
Okay. Heddins?
Aye.
Excuse me, aye. Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Agenda is adopted. Now, we'll go to public comment number one, and that is for, this comment is for the public, period, excuse me, is for the public to address the topics on today's agenda. We do have one person who's made a request to talk about the proposed renaming of Squaw Creek, and if you're okay with this, sir, we would just wait till we're dealing with that agenda item, and we would give you time then. Is that all right? Okay. Are there any other items on the agenda that anybody would like to comment on? Okay, then I will close public comment number one. Agency reports, we do not have any. We will, and going to Item 6, we do not have minutes from last week to look at now. We will consider those next week. Next, under consideration of personnel items, I've been told there is one typo under action forms, the second line, the, the name Justine Brayland should be Just, and no E at the end, Brayland, for a secondary roads employee. So I would entertain a motion to approve personnel actions with that change so noted.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Olson?
Aye.
Heddins?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Okay. Personnel actions approved. Now consent agenda. Are there any items to be pulled on consent?
None for me.
None for me.
Then I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Heddins?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Then, we will go on to public hearing items, and LeAnn Harder, for First Consideration Ordinance Number 286, Flood Plane Management Program.
Good morning.
This presentation is a little bit lengthy, and, and the amount of slides, but I'm doing it on purpose because there are two new faces for regard, decisions regarding our flood plane management ordinance. And even, Laura, she's been here a while, but I think there might be some information that's, that would help out, just as we transition our, our enforcement of the regulations. So bear with me. The presentation will reference some acronyms. A good planner has to make sure you know what those acronyms are. You'll see a lot of these throughout the regulations. We've really tried to be cognizant and make sure that we minimize the use of acronyms, but when you're dealing with the federal government, specifically FEMA, which is Federal Emergency Management Agency, you cannot help but deal with acronyms. So a lot of these are the typical acronyms you see in flood plane management. The outline I'm going to present to you today, I want to talk a little bit about the basics, the National Flood Insurance Program, the approaches and roles and responsibilities of Story County and all the entities. Just go over, quick overview of our history of flood plane management in Story County. Talk about the community rating system. We have some authority granted from the state of Iowa. I have some details about our special flood hazard area, which is another name for flood plane. Talk about the timeline that got us to where we are today, and going forward, the proposed revisions will be towards the end of the, end of the presentation, and some next steps. And at any time, please stop me for any questions you may have. So the National Flood Insurance Program actually celebrated its 50th birthday last year. 1968 is when it was established by act of Congress. It is actually reauthorized by Congress, and we are right now in kind of a continuing resolution. It's been temporarily reauthorized through the end of November. Through my, throughout my career, one time, we did go through a point in time where it was not reauthorized. It was suspended for a period of time. So it's, it's important that whomever is dealing flood plane manager, management remains cognizant of the federal requirements. The intent of creating the National Flood Insurance Program was to transfer the cost from taxpayers to flood plane property owners. Up until 1968, the federal government was covering a huge, huge amount of claims dealing with hazards, specifically dealing with flooding. That's why the NFIP was created, to transfer that risk to property owners rather than just taxpayer burden. It does make flood insurance available in communities that participate in the National Flood, Flood Insurance Program. It's kind of a double edged sword, though. If you are mapped, you must participate, or else you become a sanctioned community. I'll talk about that shortly. It also gives communities data on how to enforce regulations. Following 1973, Hurricane, Hurricane Agnes occurred, actually, that was 1972. But in 73, the National Flood Insurance Program, through the reauthorization, was kind of retooled to really say, if any property owners have a mortgage that is federally backed, they have to have flood insurance. And so in order to guarantee flood insurance is available, the community has to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. So that's kind of the carrot and stick, but not really a true carrot and stick. It is really, you have to do it in order to have flood insurance available for your citizens. Our regulations apply to unincorporated Story County only. You'll hear me talk about that several times. So National Flood Insurance Program is based on three tiered approach. It looks at mapping of the flood plane nationwide. And then the regulations and the insurance are also based on those flood plane maps, from one implementation standpoint, and then writing policies for the, for properties within and outside the flood, the flood plane rely on those maps. It's all detailed, the minimum requirements, the Code of Federal Regulations, and that is CFR Parts 59, 60, 65, and 70. I say these are the minimum regulations. The state of Iowa exceeds a minimum, and then Story County historically has exceeded the state requirements as well. So the rules and responsibilities that come along with being a map community are many, and it's a, it's a multifaceted approach. Partnerships, everything from the DNR to FEMA, and then Story County, and our communities within Story County, but also other federal entities, such as the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. We're all in this together. It is an ability to promote development practices that are safe and secure, and limit impacts on flood plane. So what happens if we don't do what we're supposed to do? There are, along with those community responsibilities, we can be sanctioned, we can be suspended. There are a number of different things that can happen to local jurisdictions if we don't keep the most recent maps, if we don't detail our regulations in an ordinance, if we don't issue permits. So again, this is all applicable to unincorporated Story County. I'm proud to say Story County has never been sanctioned or suspended for the program. And I think, it takes a lot to get to that level, but I hope the intent is that we never reach that level for any reason whatsoever.
LeAnn, I just want to point out that we're not, you not recently named, you gained a national award for your flood plane management?
Just statewide.
Statewide, sorry? Okay. That's just national, but anyway.
Yeah.
So congratulations on that, by the way.
Thank you. That was actually quite an honor. I am, as part of the Iowa Flood Plane and Stormwater Management Association, that is an organization near and dear to my heart, and I was named the 2019 Flood Plane Manager of the Year. So thank you for acknowledging that. So some instances of what could happen if we don't uphold our end of the bargain. One, we're a community rating system community, so we could have our classification reduced, and I'll talk about CRS here shortly. Again, we could be put on probation, or the worst part is suspended or sanctioned from the program. And again, if that happens, those entities that have to have, because of federally backed mortgage, flood and plane insurance, flood insurance, it's not eligible for them. So it's important that Story County continue to be diligent and follow the requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program. So it's not just something new that's come to Story County in the past 10, 15, 20 years. Actually, back in the early 70s, the flood hazard boundary maps were released to local jurisdictions nationwide. Ours is dated 1977. What FEMA did was send a letter to local jurisdictions converting the flood hazard boundary maps to flood insurance rate maps. That's then the term you've seen carried forth, the firms, flood insurance rate maps. Those are the, the maps that delineate the floodway, floodway fringe, for all the jurisdictions throughout the United States. That happened in 1977, and then fast forward to 1983, actually, June 1st, 1983, our first flood insurance rate map official, and flood insurance study was released. Those meetings actually started back in 1978. So what I'm trying to get across is, it's just not FEMA does a map, then we adopt it. There's a lengthy time period for study every time FEMA starts doing a new map. So our first, actually, official flood insurance rate maps are dated back to 1983. That's important because that tells us when we have conforming structures and nonconforming structures, when you get into the regulatory aspects. And then you fast forward even further to 2008, that's when nationwide, following the map, map modernization effort that was led by the, by FEMA, Story County became a countywide study, even though our jurisdiction is limited, unincorporated Story County, are, the maps themselves are for all the jurisdictions in Story County. And that became a digital map. So before that was all paper maps, very cumbersome, especially when you're trying to delineate where property lines are on paper maps that don't have parcel numbers, or parcel boundaries. This was a huge step forward in 2008 from our paper maps. The problem was the, the information on the map was very inaccurate. We had some detailed studies, wherein the, the river didn't even line up with flood plane. So that, fast forward to 2014, is when those detailed studies were further refined, and our current maps, we use for regulatory purposes are October 2014. Insurance agents as well use that map as well. So now, we're in a point, as the Board knows, that we're receiving new maps, it'll probably be next fall. The appeal period for that map started September 26th, and runs through December 26th. For anyone in the public, or in the audience that wants to see the new maps, or any of the historical documentations, you can go to the Map Service Center and put the link up there. It's interesting, looking back, the whole transition of how flood plane maps have changed throughout Story County, and then all the individual communities, and you can view that there. Any questions thus far? What I do want to point out, I will be coming to the Board on December 17th regarding the appeal of our maps with the resolution. At this point, I've not received any, any inquiries for appeal from any property owners. But I continue to put that out there. I think we've given property owners till early part of December to get any comments and feedback. As the Board will remember, there's some scientific data they need to provide. I really don't anticipate anything coming forward, but again, December 17th, I'll be before the Board. I just want to spend a couple of slides on community rating system. It is a voluntary program. It's kind of under that insurance end of things, of the three tiered approach for communities that are, do participate in the National Flood Insurance Program, for jurisdictions like Story County that go above and beyond the minimum. So again, that's being statewide in Iowa, but we go above and beyond Iowa regulations as well. If we're a community rating system community, or CRS community, those entities that have flood insurance in, in Story County, unincorporated, have a cost reduction on their premiums. I did reach out to our ISO specialist, and we have, I think, I printed it out, I forgot to grab it. I think we have 25 policies in force, and with that, if I remember the numbers right, five are within the Zone A, or the special flood hazard area. On average, each one receives about $180 discount a year because of our CRS status, which is really nothing to, to laugh at. It's a good number, $180 savings. So we started working on the CRS in May of 2014, actually worked about 10 months on the application materials. We knew we'd go in as a Class 9, which is a 5% discount immediately. I had no doubt about that. I was very pleasantly surprised. Our goal was a six or seven, because Story County does not have a building code, that six number is not able to be reached. I was very happy when we did go in, in October 2016, as a Class 7. So on the screen of those jurisdictions, there are currently six, five within the state of Iowa. We're right there with six or seven, or seven and eight is the general class. I'm very proud of that. We maintain it throughout all of our recertifications. Everything is in order of what they said 2017. Last year, 2018, we again maintained the Class 7. This year, I did just find out late last night that we may not be doing a recertification. It might be our full five-year review, which will come in the early spring, which gives me some, some relief that we won't be dealing this in December and January, but it will be labor intensive. But I'll, I'll get more information from our ISO specialist in the next couple of weeks on that. So I do want to spend a little bit on why we do flood plane management, how we do it beyond just the National Flood Insurance Program. The Code of Iowa, Chapter 335, talks about county zoning authority, and Section 335.2 addresses how farms are exempt, or agricultural uses are exempt from county zoning authority. I want to just pay a ten, or, or, guide you to the italics up there. It does say, even though agricultural uses are exempt, however, the ordinances may apply to any structure, building, dam, obstruction, deposit, excavation, in or on the flood planes of any river streams. So it does specifically call out flood plane regulations as being able to be applied towards agricultural uses. And then something else that kind of gets lost in the weeds sometimes, even if we cannot require a flood plane permit, the DNR can still require a flood plane permit times, if they deem it to be part of the flood plane, even if it's not part of the map flood plane. We're bound to regulatory map flood plane. The DNR is not. Okay, we are a delegated community. This is something the DNR says to local jurisdictions that have detailed flood data and maps, and they have an ordinance that has been approved by the DNR. They grant us the issuing authority for permits, in, sometimes in conjunction with the DNR, but we do have a primary permitting authority. The flip side, nondelegated communities, they just go everything through the DNR. We've always been a delegated community, at least since I've been here. So the established regulations are set forth in Chapter 80 of the Code of Ordinances. And then, and in addition to that, we have Administrative Procedures for Flood Plane Management Regulation adopted by Resolution of the Board Supervisors. And currently, according to our current regulations, my position is appointed to implement and administer the provisions of Chapter 80. So some, just some interesting information about the special flood hazard area. Okay, this is just unincorporated Story County again. About 385 structures are located in a flood plane. That will be further refined in December, as I go through, or maybe January, to go through and look at the flood plane as part of the recertification or CRS annual review. In 2018, five new structures were built, and we have one repetitive loss property, which is a very, very good statistic to say. Many jurisdictions have several repetitive loss properties. These are properties that have flood insurance, experienced loss over and over and over, and file claims over and over and over. Hence the name repetitive loss property. There are about 33,830 acres of flood plane in unincorporated Story County. That's both detailed and non-detailed study areas. About 3,700 parcels have flood insurance, or flood plane on them as well. And that number is going to be relatively consistent with existing maps and proposed maps. So that gets us to where we are, the timeline. In July of 2018, we started spending about nine or 10 months looking at a pilot program where planning and development reviewed all the flood plane permits. They did the intake, they did the review. Jerry would do the conditions, I would essentially just sign off on them. I would still review them, and it was under my signature. The permits still fall under my signature. They need to, because I am the official flood plane manager of Story County. April this year, we received direction from the Board to draft revisions to the ordinance to bring forward changes here today, to change that, that, that flood plane manager, but then some other additional regulations I'll get to. We're here today, November 2019, and the proposed effective date would be January 2020. Are there any questions before I go into the regulations? Thank you for bearing with me. Every opportunity I can to educate about flood plane management in Story County and the National Flood Insurance Program, I do, because it's a very important program.
Did you say 33,830 acres in the flood plane?
Yes.
My math says that's nearly 10% of the county, 9.2%. It's interesting.
What's interesting is I had a slide I forgot to incorporate. I had a map that followed that, that showed all of it.
Ooh.
But we do have substantial size, especially if you look at the Skunk River, the flats between Ames and Cambridge. It gets very, very wide in that area. Okay, the proposed changes, just so that I can orient the, the members of the audience and the Board as well, you have copies of the ordinance too, I believe. But if it's in red and underlined, as language proposed to be added, language proposed or removed is stricken with strikeouts, is reflected with strikeouts. Starting in Section 80.01, which is a statutory authority, simply adding reference to within unincorporated areas of Story County, and then referencing the June 1st, 1983 date. For whatever reason, a couple of years ago, this was removed, and we do need to reference that 1983 date. So this, a lot of this is housekeeping as well. I do want to mention this has been reviewed by the DNR, Iowa Department of Natural Resources, which is a requirement, and I'll tell you their comments as well as we go through. Great segue, Section 80.02, definitions. This is a suggestion from the DNR. What you see in red, there are different labels of zones on the flood insurance rate map. Zone A is just the general flood plane. AE is when we have detailed studies. These are just different levels on that flood plane map. Right now, we don't have an AH, AO, AR, et cetera, but they recommend putting it in in case at some point we may. Right now, we just have an A, and AE, and an X. Chapter, or Section 80.13, floodway fringe district. This is one of the most substantive of the changes, and this really does go in to try to complement and mirror the erosion and control, and great, and sediment control ordinance adopted by the Board Supervisors as part of the land development regulations. This is addressing the amount of fill that can be placed within floodway, floodway fringe district. Again, the fringe is designed to accommodate additional fill. There are some, some individuals that say it's basically a bowl. You can put all the pebbles in, and it'll raise up the level. I think there's a difference, that's a different opinion that's emerging, that you don't want necessarily to put all the pebbles you can into that, and raise it to, so it overflows. And this is what that's getting at. We're limiting the amount of pebbles that can be put in. So we have a 20% amount that can be filled, and we have some standards on, on how we identify that. Any questions on this?
Did DNR have a, any input or any comments on that particular?
They're really pleased to see you at it.
Okay. Thank you.
And this is again, what he, what the DNR did indicate, this might help us with our CRS reclassification too, to continue our, our steps towards six, because we're becoming more restrictive. Chapter, or Section 80.13, we are recommending increasing the free board. This is the elevation requirements for structures from 18 inches. Currently, we require elevation of one and a half feet. We're recommending going up to three feet. Ames did this years ago. I've, for a number of years, wanted to bring this forward, and this is the right time to do it, especially as we're looking at our watershed improvement, watershed assessments, our, again, our, our erosion and control ordinance. The studies have shown that even the increased costs for elevation over the life of a loan, the amount of reduction in the flood insurance program will be greater than the increase, initial increase of construction costs for that additional foot and a half. And if you go back to previous slide where I said five structures were built in the flood plane in 2018, we don't have a huge amount of development. So I don't know that will impact greatly, but we will watch that over the next year as well.
LeAnn, one issue that came up when Ames went to three feet, of course, they have much more density in each acre, but was the fact that we're, those people building up three feet, actually just pushing the water into somebody else's land is a problem. So given the fact that we don't have that density, do you see that, that we, we would avoid that issue?
I think we would avoid it, but in, because I think we would avoid it, but in, because of the density issue, but also in conjunction with that previous fill limitation of 20%. So they can't, can't fill the entire lot up to that three foot. There are some restrictions on the amount of fill that can be put there. So it's a two-pronged approach.
And don't we also ask developers to ensure that no more water leaves the site, the development site, than did pre-development?
Now with our new regulations, yes.
So those things go hand in hand.
So the free board elevation requirement from 18 inches to three feet will impact residential buildings, non-residential, factory-built homes, utility and sanitary systems, and storage of equipment and materials. We want to make sure those propane tanks, whatever, that are in the floodplain, if they're in a detailed study, are at least three feet above that base flood elevation. Then going into 80.13, again, the floodway fringe, dealing with subdivisions, this is just really rewarding, just clarifying. This is a National Flood Insurance Program that you have to show base flood elevation on preliminary and final flats. We just, again, some rewarding to make it flow a little better. Same with this, really, this is a section we always call the low damage potential. These are like smaller garages and items that are in the floodplain ancillary to a use that's already existing, a house, whatever it may be. We try to remove all the BFE, all those acronyms, replace with the language, which is that first section change in A. And then E, you see there, we need to change that one foot elevation up to three feet to be consistent with our regulations, proposed regulations. Then pipeline crossings in 80.13, we added that the crossings are actually matching the action the flood flows to. We really try to require as much as we can that all pipeline and stream crossings are buried. It's not always feasible to do such. We try as best as we can, and we do have a couple, the pipelines do cross open channel. Again, our, we try as best we can not to allow that. This is the change that does affect administration, removing reference to my position to Planning and Development Director. Initial draft did not have Planning and Development Director. It just said the Story County Board of Supervisors appoints a floodplain manager, and then we're going to approach it through the administrative procedures to appoint the Planning and Development Director. The DNR said, since this is a codification with the ordinance, put it right in this. So this is a draft from the DNR to note the Planning and Development Director. And then this is just removing the definition of development from this section and referencing definitions. Development is very specifically defined, and I'm really cautious that we leave it alone in the definitions and not have it here as well, because we want to make sure we have consistency and don't have to change in two places. So the next steps, if the board were to, after the public hearing today, see fit to adopt ordinance number 286 on first consideration. We had initially set second consideration for December 3, thinking there would not be a meeting next week other than claims only. We can still stay with December 3 for second consideration, with third consideration tentatively scheduled for December 10. And then at that same meeting, we'd be bringing forth administrative procedures. Those need to be acted by the board as a resolution. Following third and final, we'll send it to the papers and then forward to the DNR and FEMA for final approval. It does require the DNR and FEMA to sign off on both, both need to sign off, and that is why the effective date is January 1, 2020, rather than normally you see once it's published in a paper, it becomes effective.
Does it matter to you if we move the dates up? Is it easier?
It does give us some additional time, so I, you know, if it's possible, that would be fine.
So up to you means?
Next week.
Second reading next week.
So those dates would all be moved up one week. Then staff has a number of things we also need to do following today's meeting and the subsequent considerations. We need to be updating all of our forms, our outreach materials, our website to reflect the change effective January 1. Stephanie Jones, within Planning and Development, will be working with Citizen Surf, which is a software package for permitting. We have to address who will be maintaining letters of map changes and elevation certificates. That's a discussion Jerry Moore and I will have. Also, some direction from the board, when we get to that third consideration, as to whether or not I will remain as a CRS coordinator, or if that will transfer as well. The initial discussion has been that that remains with me. We'll be finalizing the appeal period for the maps. And then I do need to point out, in order to maintain our Level VI, Grade VI, sorry, for CRS, part of the points are there, rely on both Jerry Moore and myself being a certified floodplain manager, and so we need to make sure we account for that over the next couple of years. And then as applicable, making sure Planning and Development understands the duties as related to post-flood operating procedures, especially going into next flooding season, next spring.
Okay, I'm going to go back. We already had a little bit of discussion, change of the agenda next week. We have on this week's agenda a push, pushing back for the housing study, so I'd like to bring in the relationship. If we move this one forward a week, is, would this be part of the reason we're pushing back the housing study?
No. I'll get to that when we're on the agenda item.
Okay, I just wanted to ask before we vote to move something forward.
Definitely that we need to move those dates back.
All right, thank you.
So with that, my contact information is there, but it is a public hearing, and I'll be glad answering questions from the board.
I just had one question for you, Leanne. Thank you for your presentation. You mentioned that you would need to, if after the third reading, maintain or obtain your certified floodplain manager program. Is that something specific that you need to go through to maintain that certification?
Yeah, Jerry and I are both certified floodplain managers. We both are current, I'm current, my next round of CE, we're subject to CEUs over a two-year period. He's good through the end of this year. I'm good through the end of, and he starts the cycle again in 2020. I started the cycle again this year, and I'll be good through 2021. So we just need to make sure we're cognizant of that and being aware that some of our points for CRS class rely on maintaining that certification.
Got you. Thank you for the clarification.
So, and you said, we'll have that discussion separately, though, as far as how we should go ahead and assign duties going forward, right?
Specifically for the CRS, community rating system.
And on this one, because we've already changed to Planning and Development Director, we've substituted the correct one that the DNR wants to see.
Yeah, this is just for the floodplain management, for the actual implementation of the ordinance. This will not affect, the board has, would have to take a separate action to change a CRS coordinator. That was done by separate board action. There are two different paths.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions from board members? If not, then this is a public hearing item, so I'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody from the public who would like to comment? If so, would you please come to the microphone? See nobody move to the microphone, then I will close the public hearing on the ordinance and entertain a motion for approval of the ordinance and amendments and for setting second and third readings.
I would move that we approve ordinance number 286 and set the second reading for December, no, we're moving up one week, or still.
November 26.
Thank you, to November 26.
I will second the motion.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, then, Olson?
Aye.
Heddins?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Now we'll go to additional items. The first is discussion and consideration of appointment to asset for the term of April 1, 2020 to March 31, 2023. Stephanie Spence and Nicole Fisher have been interviewed, and I am recommending that they be appointed to the asset board. They both have backgrounds in human services and childhood services, and Ms. Fisher also has a background in finance, has served in a financial institution. I found them both to be very qualified individuals, so I'm recommending them for appointment to the asset board. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
I'd second.
Any discussion? Okay, Heddins?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. And I think, if I'm correct, we still have one more person we need for the asset board, so would encourage people who are members of the public, if they would like to consider being on that board, to check our website for information and contact us if you'd like more information. We do need one more person to be on to start a term effective next April 1. So then we'll go to discussion and consideration of request for the Story County Board of Supervisors' opinion about a proposal to change to the name of Squaw Creek flowing through the city of Ames and Story County in Franklin Township, and Boone County and Hamilton County. We received this request for our opinion in an email from, oh my gosh, just a second. Did not look at that again this morning, from the Bureau of Naming, I believe it was.
Bureau of Geographic Names.
Thank you, it's in my other pile here. And they said that somebody from Ames had sent a request in, had recommended that Squaw Creek be renamed as Story Creek. They wanted our opinion. They have sent it to other agencies also, or they sent it to other jurisdictions, to the city of Ames, which I think we'll be considering, or we're discussing it. Boone County and Hamilton County, they did not have an email for Franklin Township and asked me to forward that, so Franklin Township has also received it. So we have received a lot of interest in this from people, a lot of, several emails, and I'm not sure how you'd like to proceed, supervisors. Would you like to discuss first, or would you like to hear from members of the public who are here?
I guess I'd like to hear from members of the public.
Yeah, good with that.
Let's do that, then. I have a, David Gradwell, who would like to give us some information. Would you come to the microphone, please? Is there anybody else who does want to speak to this? Okay, thank you. Good morning, and thank you.
Again, thanks for being here since nine o'clock.
Good morning. My name is David Mayer Gradwell. I reside at 2212 Hamilton Drive in Ames, Iowa. I have lived in Ames for 57 years. I'm a professor emeritus of anthropology and American Indian Studies at Iowa State University. During my 32 years prior to my retirement, I was faculty advisor to two American Indian student groups on campus, UNASA, the United Native American Student Association, and AIRO, A-I-R-O, the American Indian Rights Organization. In those roles and other capacities over the years, I heard students complain about the derogatory term Squaw Creek. I supported attempts by students and faculty to get the name of the creek changed. All of these attempts were unsuccessful. So today, I want to thank those individuals who are calling again for a name change, and I thank the Board of Supervisors for taking this matter into consideration. The terms of the replacement, in terms of the replacement of the term squaw in other states for rivers, lakes, and a national wildlife refuge, it is an appropriate time for Story County to make this change. I would like to suggest a name that would honor the Native Americans who occupied the state in which we live and from whom the state of Iowa was named, namely, the Iowa Indians. To this end, I contacted Lance Foster, a former student of mine, who is an enrolled Iowa, one of few individuals who speak the Iowa language, is the tribal historic preservation officer for the Iowa Tribe of Kansas and Nebraska, and is also the vice chair of that tribe. Lance obtained two master's degrees at Iowa State University, one in anthropology, in which his thesis analyzed the significance of ritual objects in Iowa's sacred bundles, the other in landscape architecture, in which his creative component analyzed the place names in Iowa's sacred landscape. Lance's response was, quote, "There is no Iowa name for it that I know of. One could call it Woman Creek instead, or Hinage. For the above reasons, I propose that Squaw Creek be renamed Hinage Creek." Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question. I think we chatted briefly about this before, but going back to, all of the attempts before were unsuccessful. Do you have, can you share with us possibly why those attempts have been unsuccessful? Did it fail for the jurisdictions to agree?
I think, at least in the 70s, maybe even going back to the 60s, there was not a receptive audience for changing names, and there were people who said, you know, "We've called it Squaw forever, so why should we change it?" In the 90s, there was more of a concerted effort, and I'm not quite clear, and it could be that appropriate procedures weren't being followed, but it was my impression in the 90s that there still was not much of a receptive mood on the part of the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any questions?
I just appreciate you coming in, your input.
Thank you.
And the research that you did as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We do have time, so if anybody else would like to address us, I would, we would be quite willing. Wayne Clinton, former supervisor.
I wish I'd bet you money out in the hall, Wade.
Did he say he wasn't going to talk?
He said he wasn't talking today.
Wayne Clinton, former county supervisor and former social studies teacher in the Ames School District for 34 years plus. When I saw this on the agenda, it tweaked my interest, primarily because of the miseducation that our students have received throughout history. Being a former teacher, when I realized historically that most of the textbooks that students learn from originate from the state of Texas. Well, if you know anything about Texas and its history, dealing with marginalized groups, it is not a very glowing history. And so a lot of references of outstanding achievements and contributions were omitted, or there was just one little paragraph with no real substance. And so as teachers, we had to do a lot of background research in order to address this. What's of interest to me is that for 18 years, my students toured the Story County Greenbelt, looking at the pioneer trails in the history, and of course, what name was referred to was Squaw Creek was one of those particular areas. Being of African-American origin, I tried to avoid making reference to that name, other than the fact that it was pointed out, that this is what the name of the creek was, that we were there, but trying to also point out that, in my opinion, it was controversial in that it is often used as a derogatory reference to Native American women. Now historically, and I'm sure Gradwell would probably agree with me in this regard, I cannot imagine, from my own personal research, is that the, those who chose to use this name as the American version, which was derivative from language originated by Native Indians, it had a different connotation. And so it became much easier to actually use the term squaw, but if you look at the history of, I believe that it was not in an attempt to glorify the women, and I think that in this day and age, there is more of a consciousness towards looking at history and... looking at history and making sure that as we move forward, that future generations will have a clearer understanding of how marginalized groups historically were denied their place of honor or importance in American culture, and that a name change in this regard might be worthy of consideration. Am I here saying, yes, let's change it? I guess I'm not at that point today, but I'm strongly in support of us giving a lot of thought to this process. I ran into maybe 11 different people, and I told them why I was coming, and you know, the first comment to me was, "But why are we trying to undo history?" And I said, "You really don't understand history very well, do you?" I said, "Because, you know, our education was not complete." And I think what we're trying to do today is to say that if there are Native groups that feel that this is a derogatory term, and should not be used to identify places such as lakes or rivers or other communities, that maybe it's time to look at changing that name. So my question, and you answered it earlier in the statement, is this just doesn't impact only Story County? I was curious as to whether or not, what about our close jurisdictions such as Boone, Hamilton, and some of the other areas? Do we, as a county, have the authority to make such a reference without support from the Board of Supervisors of those other counties as well? And so that's just a question that I just throw out from that standpoint, because I understood that this is just kind of bringing the information and kind of having discussion, and that you weren't necessarily going to make a decision today, is that correct?
I don't know.
Well, we don't know, Wayne. You sat up here.
Okay.
Let me just say that this has gone to the Boone County Supervisors and Hamilton County Supervisors and the city of Ames, as well as us. And I did send it to the Franklin Township trustees, because I was, it was requested I do so, because they couldn't figure out how to get hold of them. I don't know if we're going to make a decision today or not. My personal opinion, and, excuse me, my personal opinion is that I think we make our recommendation, and the other jurisdictions that were asked can make their recommendation. Is that your understanding?
That's my understanding, my understanding of how the process works, okay? I guess my frustration here a little bit was, is that I'd love the three of us to be able to kind of work it out, and talk about it, okay? Appreciate your comments, I think they're very valid, Wayne. When I first learned of this word as a little child, even I was told by my parents back a few, more than a few decades ago, that it was a derogatory term. And I wasn't even allowed to say the English equivalent of what I was taught that this meant. So, so I'm fully supportive of doing what we need to do to move an effort forward to get it changed. The process here is the one that had me a little frustrated there for a minute, okay, as you were talking, because the process allows an individual to go to the, to the Board of Geological Naming. Okay, yeah, I forgot that last one, okay. So, but, we all know, you know, as a former elected official, we know, sitting here as elected officials, that sometimes if a citizen would approach the local authorities first, it would be easier for us to start a conversation, especially with jurisdictions from other jurisdictions. And so my only, my frustration here is that since this has now come to light and come on our agenda, that already there was an application for story, after Judge Story, and the conversation out in the community, and the conversation that Professor Gradwall just brought, there have been a couple of emails about would it be more appropriate to try and find someone connected with the, a Native American tribe from this area? Some have suggested a female, the suggestion here about Hinage, okay, all right, is a great suggestion. So we're just, I'm not sure whether it's what come, you know, which one is more appropriate, what comes first, the chicken or the egg, for that analogy. But we certainly are being brought in here kind of at the last point, so if we do decide, one way is we just give our feedback and go on, or if we decide to be more proactive on this, and reach out to those other jurisdictions, all who get a chance to weigh in, it will be a conversation on the name itself that will end up taking the time, okay? And maybe we could have avoided some of that upfront, but.
Well, last comment that I want to say is, I want to thank you all for at least bringing this topic to light and having this discussion. I think in, this is long overdue, in my opinion, and so I look forward to seeing where it goes, so thank you so much.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Is there anybody else who would like to make any comments? Okay, then we'll turn to the board for discussion.
You know, I do think it's a long time coming. As Professor Gradwall was talking about, I, you know, it kind of percolated back in the 90s to look at doing a name change, or was proposed. I remember being in the legislature, that someone came to me wanting to know the mechanism to try to get the name changed as well. They were thinking at that time that the state legislature could change that, and said, "No, that's a whole, whole larger process to go to as well." I would say to Supervisor Olson, I grew up very similarly to you, and there were certain words or certain terms you just did not utilize, or say in our home, and you didn't, you know, say it outside of the home as well. I think it was great that there's another individual who's brought this before us to take another consideration. I think sometimes we get to where we're just, you kind of forget about it, and then someone kind of keeps pushing it in front of you for consideration. I have done, tried to do some outreach, I did some research on the US Geological of Names, to just kind of understand their processing, how you apply for it, kind of what their board actions do, actually read several of their board meeting minutes, some of their, they do meet monthly, and then they do have some that meet quarterly, so I was reading through some of those. And I've noticed several states have that same name for their creeks, and are moving to change that. So that was kind of interesting as well. And I have done some outreach to the other communities, have not heard back from them, wanted to just find out, you know, where are they in the process, are they putting it on their agenda, kind of just get some dialogue as to what are their thoughts, because you don't just name part of a creek, it's going to be the whole, the whole thing. And so that is something that I've been working on these last few days.
Thank you. I think I kind of said it when responding to former supervisor Clinton, yeah.
Okay. Well, I did some research too, and I did the easy research of Wikipedia, but it tells you quite a bit, and you can't read the Wikipedia definition of the word squaw without gasping, quite frankly. And I was also curious of what was happening in other areas, because you hear, "Well, why would we be doing this, is anybody else doing this?" There's a whole bunch of places that have the name squaw in them, and yes, there are, and a lot of them have changed in the last 20 years. Saskatchewan River, the Montana Legislature will simply not allow that to be part of a name of a place. The American Ornithologist Union actually got a name of a duck changed, that used to be called Old Squaw. Arizona, British Columbia, California, Buffalo, New York, Provo, Utah, Missouri, Saskatchewan, lots of places have changed names. And I said, Montana did it statewide, with an advisory council that said, "Get rid of all those, work with local jurisdictions, or whoever you have to, and get rid of all those names." Yeah, there are still other places in, in Story County. Ames has a Squaw Creek Drive. I was told yesterday that there was a Squaw Park in Ames, I said, "No, there isn't." I looked again, and yes, there is. It's right on the Squaw Creek Drive, and it's a very small park, I'd never seen it, I'd never noticed before it was a Squaw Park. I thought it was the one, the Squaw Creek Park in Lynn County. We know in the unincorporated areas that there is a development that's known as Squaw Valley. We also know that there is a Squaw Road, it's a private road, but called Squaw Road there. So there are names in Story County that would be, would be impacted. I'm just going to say personally, I grew up in this county, I grew up in Franklin Township. When I was a kid, and we looked at sunsets, we looked at them over a tree line that is follows Squaw Creek. My grandmother and I went looking at wildflowers every spring in bottom land in Boone County, just on the other side of Story County where their farm was. I mushroomed with my parents in bottom land, and Squaw Creek and Story County. My parents, when they got together socially with their friends, and they were trying to figure out when they were getting together, my mother would call her best friend and say, "When's the Squaw Creek group meeting next?" So, I mean, I look at that, and I say, "I've lived with this name all my life, I didn't know until very recently, you know, relatively, what that term meant, and I have no nostalgic need to have that creek continue to be named what it is, personally." It's a beautiful creek, it's a beautiful part of the county, it's a beautiful part of Boone County and Hamilton County, and it deserves a more beautiful name. That's my personal feeling here. I don't, I have seen several emails that Story Creek was not really the selection that most of the people who were in favor of a name change would have looked at. I did recy, and I've, I've seen something about women, because, you know, kind of redeemed the name. I also have reached out to Boone and Hamilton Counties, I've heard from one person I know in Boone County, and she is with the Squaw Creek Watershed Management Authority, she's the chair, and that's particularly why I contacted her, because I thought they use that name in their organization, and she said, "It's time to change it." A person I know in Boone County contacted me on his own and said, "It's time to change it." It doesn't look like the Hamilton County Supervisors are going to recommend a change, and I haven't heard back from the Boone County Supervisors. I was going to try to call them this morning, but I didn't get that done. I know the city of Ames is going to be looking at this, I don't know if it's next week, but sometime soon. My personal feeling, you know, when I, I saw in a lot of emails that people said, "We should really contact Native Americans," and Professor Gradwall, appreciative that you did that. I, I don't know that I'm ready to say a name, I'm wondering if the, if the Board on Geographic Names would be willing to, if we made a suggestion, would be willing to reach out. Or we could tell them that we might be, you know, if we were to say, "We think it should be renamed..." I think one of the reasons I'm not for the story name, I think there's two reasons. One, Story County has already, he's already been honored with the Story County name, and he was a great jurist. But the other thing is, I think, I think the creek may even start up in just a little bit of Webster County, but if not, it's right on the side, the Hamilton County side. Hamilton and Boone Counties also have, you know, have some, you know, quite a bit of ownership of this water, water body as well, so I don't know about us saying, "Oh yeah, we think Story County," or Story Creek, I'm not necessarily crazy about that. So those are my personal thoughts. Maybe, you know, the form doesn't give us mushroom, but it gives us a little room to maybe write in it, you know, a little more than just, they say we can approve the proposed name, reject the proposed name, take action as specified below, or render a decision without a recommendation. We could, if we wanted to, check, take action specified below, and simply write or type in, change the name, but consult with, consult with Native Americans.
Given the fact that there's been two initiatives that the professor was able to tell us about, that he was aware of before, and it just dropped, and it died, I'd like to see what we might be able to do to be more proactive, okay? And that's, hence my, my earlier comments about the reach out. It's not a criticism of, of this woman who cared enough to come forward while the rest of us were going forward with our daily lives. It is more about, as I said, at what point do you take this so we can get it done? And that's reaching out to other jurisdictions. And I had mentioned that as I was listening to our local, one of our local radio stations this morning on my way to a 7:00 AM meeting, that it was a discussion for the announcer this morning. And also, I guess there's some dialogue going on, on social media, about the supervisors should hold a contest to pick a new name. Well, and I, thank you for smiling with me, because that's kind of hard, I think the staff would not enjoy kind of doing that also. But there's a sentiment out there that I think we might be able to translate into, "Hey, Story County Supervisors, could you please take a lead here?" So, so based upon the responses then, what is it we want to do? We don't have to get this form back right away. I did talk to the chair of the Board of the Naming, okay? And one of the things he told me is that they only meet for four hours every month, if, or five weeks, et cetera. And so it's not like they handle all the applications right away, this has been sent out, but they're waiting for the local jurisdictions to send it back. So if we reached out, like you two have done, thank you, and said, "Hey, we'd like to have a dialogue if you haven't already put this on your agenda, and then talk a little bit more, if there would be some way for us to be able to recommend to go forward with a different name or two," which would come back to research, it'd be, come back to reaching out. So it would not be a quick process, but it would be that we would at least be driving the conversation among those jurisdictions. We don't have to influence what they end up with, well, certainly, but, but if we want it to happen, the, I was suspecting the majority of these jurisdictions are going to have to be okay with a name, and maybe okay with a process. So that, that is what I'd, I'd like to see us maybe.
Did, did the person you talked to say a unanimous, something from all the jurisdictions?
No, did not.
Because I don't think all the jurisdictions will agree.
Right. And in fact, the board, he told me that the composition of the board is made up of experts from various different departments and agencies, and representative groups, supposed to be speaking for a constituency nationwide. So there's a variety there, and they have, he said, they have a pretty detailed conversation on the feedback on that. Clearly, with what other states, with other jurisdictions have done with the geological parts of this, they've had this discussion before.
Well, here's what I would have been, one thing I have been doing, and I would volunteer to follow up on, is I have been having some discussions with Mayor Hala of Ames, just asking what they were going to do, and he, in fact, some of the, the feedback I got was something he got, and he forwarded on to me. I would be willing to take all the, all the emails, feedback that we as a county have received, and forward that on to the city of Ames, and any thoughts we might have. If we, if you thought that it would be good, and I can also double back with the township trustees, Franklin Township trustees, and see what they would say. I think Hamilton Counties, you know, I don't know how far we go there. I mean, I've reached out to a couple, you know, people I know who are involved with things, who do not represent jurisdictions, but that was just, you know, so they won't have a voice unless it's through us.
Well, I'll have a meeting on Thursday where a couple of those supervisors from those particular counties will be here, so I can certainly talk with them. I have reached out to some of them already, again, I've just not heard back from them yet, so could certainly see just where they're at, I mean, are they even looking at it yet, or any considerations on it? You know, if you look at the Board of Geological Names at their meeting minutes, they've got some pretty detailed meeting minutes, but yeah, they're, they're generally are meeting for about four hours, there's only so many names that they are approving at a time. I'm not sure if they're only looking at so many at a particular meeting, or if it's just their time, if they're, if they're sticking to, "We're only meeting for four hours," which I kind of got. hours, which I kind of got, which I kind of got the impression of, since all their meetings tend to end like right around 2:00 or 2:05, or right within that timeframe, that, gosh, if they don't have enough, then they're laying it over till the next particular month for their meeting.
Yes. He said four.
Four, yeah.
Sorry, I don't know what happened. What's going on with that? One thing I'm concerned about is that some people representing Native Americans have some input to us. And to me, that's very important right now, because the, basically, the slur was against Native American women. And I think that whatever input we could find there, and Professor Gradwell, you had a couple of names you said you'd be willing to share with me. I'd like to reach out to those people and try to get some more feedback.
I appreciate you offering to continue with this. You're the one who first took it on for the research we've got here, you know, as far as the documents today. And I think, I think would be very comfortable with you going forward with that reach out. Sounds like, Lisa, you would do those. So I won't do that part of it. I'm going to leave it for the two of you and kind of, you know, to, to do that reach out. So I guess if I, I'm not ready to make a motion on this until we have more information about how we could do a reach out on alternate names.
I could, if that's where you're at also, I could also email the person who sent this email and just say it's going to take us a few more weeks to arrive at a decision.
So just for clarification then, if we don't take a vote, are, is it dead then? Are we looking at an issue bringing it, are you looking at?
Bringing it back.
Bringing it back then.
When we have more information.
Yeah, I just wanted the clarification, because I want to make sure that we do bring it back before us. I just think we need a little bit more time to get some more input.
Just a second. Shelley?
Direction.
Direction.
Can you give direction?
We can give, we can just table it.
No.
No.
That's, that's.
We'll take it off the table next meeting then, okay. Okay, so I think we have a consensus that what we're going to do is do some follow-up as we have discussed, and that we will, when we're ready then, we'll place it on the agenda again. Okay?
I approve that motion.
Do you need me to?
Oh, you don't need a motion. You don't need a motion. You just need the direction. Sorry. Okay.
Direction will do.
Gotcha.
If we're okay with that.
Yep, that's fine.
And you'll follow up with the other counties?
I will follow, yep.
Because you'll see them, and I will follow up with the city, and with the information that Dr. Gradwell is going to give me. And if anybody else has any ideas, I think somebody said the state archaeologist. I'll go back through these emails, because I think I had a couple other suggestions. And I'm, I'm willing to do that, yeah. Okay?
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
I thank everybody who came for this discussion. I think it's an important one. I particularly want to thank Ms. Martin for doing her application and bringing that up. I'm going to read one thing I saw on, on social media, because that's why I'm so, I'm, I'm so concerned that we get the voices of Native Americans. And it was in a, a string that was kind of like, why do we have to do this? This is too politically correct, this kind of thing. And all of a sudden, something, and I'm kind of reading it, and it's kind of, you know, same thing. All of a sudden, I see, I am a Native American woman from Montana. I now live in Iowa. The word is offensive, but having a non-Native speak out is almost as offensive. Be glad your ancestors were not treated the way mine were. And I just wanted to read that, because that, that was, to me, that's why I said, yeah, we need to hear more from Native Americans on this. So, thank you very much for letting me read that. And whoever wrote that, and I know your name, but I didn't read it because I didn't have your permission. Thank you for putting that on Facebook. So, where are we now?
Moving on, the timeline.
Move on. Okay. What we have now is the revisions to the estimated timeline for the Story County RFP, the Housing Study and Needs Assessment. And LeAnn, again, thank you. And thank you, everybody who spoke today.
I did put up today's agenda, proposed revisions to the timeline for the request for proposals that is out there right now for the housing needs, Housing Study and Needs Assessment. These extensions would then become applicable following, after we've already received the proposals. Proposals are due December 13th. So the, the memo that I prepared does extend out about two weeks, starting in January. End of this year into early January, there will be some staffing limitations. And I think this approach would be, I'm recommending this approach to make sure that we have appropriate staff to make sure to carry this process forward.
None, just because I understand. I mean, you know, that this, this is, when you've got the end of the year, it happens around here, and there's a variety of different issues that come up, that even though I would have liked to have had it done two years ago, but yeah, there's, there's none. This is just how it happens. So.
And I was really pleased as I looked at it. I thought, it's only really a two to three week delay.
Yeah.
And so, depending on the Board's action today, when we do the question, answer, response, or later this month, I can post this as an amended RFP, so that the, those preparing the proposal will be aware of the amended timeline as well.
I'm sure they'll be glad also, given the time of year it is. So I'd make a motion that we approve this adjusted amended timeline.
I will second the motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, Olson?
Aye.
Hiddens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Thank you, LeAnn.
Thanks, LeAnn. And for the work you've done on it already. It's been a lot of work.
Okay, then, we are going to consideration of purchase of cat cages. We have such a diverse agenda.
We do.
Okay, so we're going from human housing to fetal housing.
Yeah, cover it all.
Sue, what, what do you got?
Good morning. Well, so we have a donation account, Friends of the Animals. We do it with fundraisers and contributions from people. We have a need for, what we've got out there now are single cage pop-ups. They're just kind of a collapsing cage that we use, and we're, we've been using these to house animals and cats in particular. And what we want to do is, they're very time-consuming to clean, because, you know, you can't get every nook and cranny as you can with a solid stainless steel. And so, we would like to purchase with our donation account, three banks of cages, and I think you guys got the information on those with the price and everything. And we would do it with our Friends of the Animals money, and we would do it as soon as amendments were able to be done for the budget. But I wanted to kind of get into this now and, and look at it, and answer any questions that you might have.
I think the only question I have is, how many cages did you say you?
There's three banks. There's two banks of 12 and one of nine.
Okay.
And they will pretty much replace these collapsible cages that we have. It's just, it's, you know, we could buy more collapsible cages and save money, but it's one of those things when they're cleaned over and over, they get corrosive, they get, where they're not, we're not able to clean them very well. And in the long run, we have got some stainless steel cages. Well, we got some of them from Iowa State before I started, and that's 26 years ago, and they're standing strong and doing well. And we managed to keep a pretty disease-free shelter. And I would just like to continue that with, with the new cages.
Sure, sure.
And they're on wheels.
And they're on wheels.
Looking for a ride.
We can ride them all around. Well, the nice thing, too, is we can wheel those outside to actually foam and clean them. So there's a lot of advantages.
Okay. I'm fine. So. I, well, then I would make the motion to approve the $22,428.98 to be utilized with your donation account to purchase the cat cages.
I would.
After it's amended.
After it's amended.
Yes. I would second that.
Okay. This is 95 cents.
Did I say 90? What did I say?
I said 98.
Oh, sorry, 95?
Can we reflect? Have it reflected? Just so we don't, okay.
It's three because.
Okay, so.
I accept the amendment to that.
Any further discussion? If not, Hiddens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was in a meeting the other day, and I said something to somebody about, isn't that about $800 that that's going to cost? And some person said, it's $795. So I said, I stand corrected. And I thought, people really care about the number being exact. So it's the only reason I did that.
They do.
795, okay, that's.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thanks, Sue. Okay, now we have Joe Quaker, who is going to talk to us with the IRVM quarterly report.
Good morning.
Good morning, team.
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
I'm good.
No show and tell?
I can't hear very well. What?
No show and tell?
Uh, yeah, I got that over here. So, the long-tailed duck is a sea duck, really pretty, does come through Story County, or the Midwest, and Iowa down our rivers on occasion. I've seen one in hand. That was the old Squaw. It was renamed the long-tailed duck.
Thank you.
Little trivia as I was sitting back there. 33 years. Come February 27th of '21, the IRVM program has been around Story County, 33 years since February. Black Hawk County would be the only county, and it was like in April of '87 instead of February. So, good job, Story County, for keeping it going. Joe Quaker, Vegetation Management Biologist, along with Tyler Kelly, Vegetation Management Specialist, along with the IRVM program, which is going to change, I think. That acronym has been reviewed by our, our state office that kind of supports us through the University of Northern, Northern Iowa, but I'm not quite sure what the name's going to be. They had all kinds of different acronyms that they're still working on and logos. And if you've ever worked on a logo before, it takes a lot of time for it to go through the process to figure it out. But anyway, for now, we're still IRVM. We do have Allison and Jeremy on, seasonal staff. Jeremy replaced Tanner. I don't know if you remember Tanner. So, and they're helping us out, as long as our budgeted funds are there, which they are, and the weather stays, you know, good enough for us to work in the, and outside in the open ditches and things. So, you have my report, the last, I, right, in hand, kind of what I, yeah. There's a couple of things I forgot to put on here that are important, and mainly it was our seed harvest. But, so I was here in September, and we have a little better system now at tracking our work orders, and that's going to even improve more. I think we're going to get a tablet, kind of what Darren and his staff are working on. So we'll be able to track our work orders better in the field and take pictures, which will be really nice to do for mapping. Not going to really go through all of these, except if you look at the roadside planting sites in our right-of-way, you know, you know, so Story County has about 965 miles of roadside, and that's about 6,000 acres of, of open land-ish, depending if you're in front of a home, or if it's a residence. But typically, we do about 60, we've done up to 84 different plantings, and that's in the whole year. But from July 1st, we're up to 40. And, you know, Darren's not in here, I don't think, but it kind of coincides with the weather. A lot of moisture, a lot of rain, a lot of flooding, a lot of spots to fix in our, in our roadside. So, and so the number below that says 10 acres. So really, these 40 spots are little divots, you know, driveway entrances, culverts, things like that, tiles that got clogged. So we're not getting a lot of big acres done, but we're moving around a lot, getting things seeded. And working on down, I'll talk about the harvest in a minute. And, you know, LeAnn was in here talking about our, our flood plane. And the one thing that is really neat that Story County does is we have a, a program called the Private Lands Program, where we rent equipment to landowners and operators to, to put in filter strips and buffer strips and waterways, in which does help with all the flooding, you know, I mean, not a catastrophic event, but it, it's a very important part of, of Story County's mission to improve water quality and, and air quality and everything like that. But we did get out to, to five landowners this fall, and around 87 acres of waterways were put in. So that's kind of special. I like that number. Working on down, you can see 88 hours of volunteer work. Those 88 hours were pretty much exclusively people helping with our public seed harvests. So we had three seed harvests. One was canceled because of the rain. It was on a Saturday. And that's the one that they end up at the winery out north of town. But we didn't make it to that one. It was raining that Saturday. And raining and harvesting seed does not work. So along with the harvest, so we have this new John Deere 4400 combine that we finally figured out how to make it combine prairie seed, along with the old red ones that we have. Kind of like what's going on currently now. I listened to market to market on Sunday. I think Story County was 20% behind its corn harvest, or something like that. But in late September, October, we would have been done harvesting prairie seed, but the seed wasn't even ripe yet, okay? And then we had rain, and we had about a four-day window to harvest seed. And so we hit it hard. And then it shut down. We had really, really cold weather, and 40 mile an hour winds with moisture. And so when the plants get wet, and the seed gets wet, and you hit it with wind, the seed falls off. So we show up on Monday morning, the seed's gone. And, you know, we had just, it's not worth going out and harvesting. So, the seed we got is great. We just didn't get a lot of it this year. So, it's how it goes. And we're working still getting it weighed and tagged and bagged and all that other stuff. And that, that seed does supplement our budget. It goes in roadsides. It also goes to other wildlife areas as we acquire or need to, to, to plant. So, need a drink of water quickly, sorry. Working on down with the budget, last Friday, we received a packet from the Iowa Department of Transportation. They finally signed off on the grants that we, we received, the Living Roadway Trust Fund grant, and I have those numbers here. So we budgeted in FY '20, $48,000 roughly for a new cab over truck. And the grant allowed us, we were hoping for 10, but we got 49, or $5,900. We wanted 10. That was the maximum, but we got $5,900. So, that equates to 42, 385 tax asking for that. So, we also budgeted for a sprayer. And by the way, the old sprayer and truck was $19.90, so it was time for a new one. And we're, we're doing it right. We're getting the best there is out there to get the job done. The sprayer system, the sprayer and the GPS that goes with it, total price on that is about $35,000. We did get $15,000 from the grant, from the Living Roadway Trust Fund to help offset that cost. Tax asking is $19,850. So, we're working on that. The other thing that's not a grant that I put in what we're working through our budget is the 40 by 40 shop addition, they go on the south side of our shop. I'm working with planning and zoning to get that worked out. And you will see that paperwork come through when we select the person that's going to build that for us. So, we're excited to have a little more space. Last week, the Conservation Corps of Iowa was in to help Story County Conservation. We budgeted that. We had a crew of four that came down from Minnesota, and they started last Tuesday. A little chilly that morning. But we started on the Prairie Rail Trail, which is a high-quality remnant in Story County, along with, with a bike trail. And we went along and cut the bigger trees out and logged that, logged them, or we chipped them into a dump truck. The brush we chipped, the logs we kept, which we'll grab up later and do something with. But we want to try to, we want to keep some, some habitat there, some brush for upland game and things like that, to survive the winter. But primarily the goal, the management practice for that area is to keep the trees out of that, so the integrity of the, of the prairie. for that area is to keep the trees out of that so the integrity of the prairie can stay intact. Make sense? We also went to Do Little Prairie, and then we went to Christianson Wildlife Area. So we kind of spread the love around the county on areas. That's what happened last week. We also, now I'm going to switch to the drainage district part of life that we do, keeping and managing our trees and brush out of our open ditches. In Warren Township, we got two projects done that we contracted out with the bid process with Jensen Construction. One was in Harden Story One. The other just finished up Saturday in Harden Story Three. That was to get some of the trees and debris out of the open ditch so the water would go that was backing up, blowing farmer's tiles out above the open ditch. So we were able to get that taken out. It was seventy-five hundred in Harden Story One and forty-eight hundred in Harden Story Three, and that primarily was, unfortunately, one of my friends, The Beaver, does an awesome job. A lot of wildlife, does a lot of neat things, but this little family had a pretty big dam going across the creek, and we had to remove that and some of the silt that backed up with it. I'm sure The Beaver's fine. He probably moved on down to Minerva Creek somewhere. And we'll, you know, we'll be dealing with him later, I assume, somehow. But anyway, I'll leave that go. We are going to start logging trees out of Grant Thirteen, which is the open ditch right along the east side of the interstate, I-35. And that goes from Two Hundred and Sixty-Fifth up to the Nevada City Well Site. So we're going to start that. I haven't been over there this week. The corn was in last week, but they've got a lot of corn out. Although I think, did I see on the news, we got an inch of rain in Story County last night? So things are going to be kind of slow. We won't be able to get out there until it dries up. We have a lot of brush piles to take care of. We have twenty-four work orders that are open right now. So a culvert on Three Hundred that we need to seed. Actually, my team's down there now putting in some silt logs. Other than that, we're just looking forward to winter stuff, fabrication, equipment maintenance, seed cleaning. We need to build the pad up for the building where the shop's going. We need to get that elevated and haul some clay in. But that's kind of the IRVM deal for today. How long, how long was that?
I didn't time you.
That was fun, right? Very informative.
Twelve minutes.
Thank you. Thank you.
I really appreciate the listings here, too, and I think that it helps the public understand what it is.
Well, guess what? It's good to have, thank you for that, because it helps me in my year-end report, so. Any questions?
I just want to ask you for a number again. You said nine hundred and sixty-five miles of roadside. How many acres does that equal?
I'm guessing around fifty-eight hundred.
Fifty-eight hundred acres.
Mm-hmm, maybe up to sixty-four. But it gets complicated because some of that's curb and gutter. And, you know, so quite a bit. Lot of neat, lot of open habitat in our road sides. In some places, that's all we have for stuff, is.
No.
Oh, show and tell, I'm sorry.
I was hoping you'd just leave it if I didn't say anything.
Since it's brush season, we're always looking for ways to apply herbicides safely and economically, okay? So when we cut brush, you normally have a little sprayer. We're all certified to spray, but typically, the spray that you use to spray brush is ready to use. And when you spray a lot of brush, it can, you have collateral damage. You can hurt other plants next to that. So there's this thing called, I don't really know the official name, I call it the dobber. I don't know how to spell it, D-A-B-B-E-R possibly, but or D-O-B-B-E-R, dobber. So this isn't a new invention, okay? A lot of people use these. It's going to take the place of the spray bottle. And what happens with, sometimes you get tired and, you know, you don't start bending over at the end of the day. A lot of people start spraying like this, so the spray's not as accurate, okay? Of course, I would never do that, but I've seen it happen. And so what happens here is you put the herbicide in, turn this, it fills up, you keep this shut, so your herbicide's in here, then you shut this, and you can put the cap back on it. And then when you go out to the field, you go ahead and take this off and put it in a place that you won't lose it, and you turn this on, and when you have someone cutting ahead of you, typically, you work in teams of two, you can just let the little sponge, and you just dob the stem of the plant.
I have a question. Do you put food coloring in your herbicide?
Dab, you say dab?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that way you know where you've been. But it can get messy.
Yeah, it can.
Thank you for letting me show this. All right. Any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. So we have no other reports on the agenda, so we're to upcoming agenda items. And that's where then we would discuss what we're going to do on November twenty-sixth, do you believe? And I will have a letter of support then for the ARANET grant that the professor from Iowa State University is going to put together, is putting together, and I can give a little more information on that later. We can just talk about it next week. And also, we could have the second reading of the ordinance for the floodplain management. And what else would we have? For, we might have another commission member recommendation.
Ah, okay.
Okay, so those are the things I could see for the twenty-sixth.
Just a regular meeting.
Just a regular meeting, not, yeah, not claims only, but it's going to not be a long, none of those are going to be things that take very long, I don't think. But they're things that we need to get going.
Well, if we open it up, though, as a regular meeting without any instruction, right? We could have staff put some things on.
Couldn't we call it limited agenda, is what I was thinking.
Okay.
So it's a limited agenda for things that need to be, and if staff have something that just has to get done, we'll consider that, but it's limited agenda.
Okay.
That gets the right message. Are there, are any other things either of you have for the meeting?
I've done it this time.
No, I've been planning on it being even just consent-only, so, yeah, okay.
It might be consent-only, depending. Okay. Public forum number two, comments from the public. Item's not on the agenda. The board may not take any action on the comments. Do the requirements of the Open Meetings Law, but we may do so in the future. So I would open the public forum. Is there anybody who would like to make any comments? If not, I will close the public forum, and we will discuss liaison assignments, committee meeting updates, and announcements from the supervisors. Would like to-
Sure. Just kind of looking at my calendar and stuff, so. Sorry, that microphone is just, I'm not quite sure where to sit or speak from. I started partaking in a Public Health Leadership Academy. We had our first session last night. It's an online session. We, the course goes about every six weeks, so we'll end, I think it's like July twentieth. So we have a topic each time, learning more about public health, the impact at the local level. And so I'll be bringing information back as I'm learning more on public health from that avenue. It has, last night on the course, there was about fifty-nine people across the state that were partaking in it. Predominantly, there were individuals from local public health organizations. It's facilitated or taught to the University of Iowa through their department, but there's several supervisors on as well. And then they have got a little quiz at the end afterwards. Not very, not very hard or whatever, but, yeah, they just have just a little kind of informational quiz going on. This morning, I attended the, what was the name of that summit? The Future Ready Iowa Summit. I thought they had some very good presenters talking about apprenticeship programs and how businesses are connecting with high schools. Ames is doing it, Nevada's doing it. They had a presenter from Boone in their collaboration with Fairway. They had a conversation from the Ark of Story County talking about Project Search and placing people with disabilities into service programs as well. So would have liked to have stayed for the discussion at the end that they had. Didn't have the time because we had other obligations, other obligations here today. My calendar, I have that we've got a department head meeting this afternoon, and then I'm going to try to make, the Amos meeting is talking on affordable housing, I believe is the topic tonight.
It's on supportive, supportive housing, that housing first.
Right, 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 which I went to, oh, several months ago, they had one, so I think this is their follow-up. So I have that on my calendar. Thursday, I have the Aging Resources meeting down in Des Moines. That's at nine in the morning. I have a CICS meeting at one in the afternoon. And then the Mid-Iowa Community Action, which generally meets the fourth Monday of the month, actually is doing their annual meeting that evening in Marshalltown. So that will be my full day for that particular day. And that's kind of my schedule right at this particular time. And I think we have an interview on Monday, the twenty-fifth, with another potential commission member. I think I got the email, I just haven't put that on the calendar yet, so I will get that on there.
Sorry about that.
No, it's fine, actually, it works better for my schedule as well, so. No, that's no problem.
Okay, sorry. All right, I'm having a cramp in my side here. I've been having it for the last hour, so, anyway, but, okay. So, yeah, the Future Ready Iowa, lots of good information there to the employers. We did the canvas this morning. So this afternoon, I will not be at the elected officers and department head meeting because I have a conflict with the Story County Housing Trust Fund. And we're pick, we're choosing today the new fiscal and administrative agent. So throwing those balls up in the air. So if you guys would, you know, care to share with me afterwards, I'd appreciate it about what may be going on there, all right? Then I'm headed to the Amos discussion about the Housing First Initiative and seeing where they are on that. And there's going to be probably people there from ten or different, ten or more different entities, all related to either mental health or affordable housing on that. So then I am going to do, then I have the Central Iowa Regional Housing Authority Board, but I'm going to do a phone-in on that. I'm not going to drive down to Grimes. So Wednesday, I have tied up, I'm tied up all day in Johnston with Iowa Workforce Development's meeting for the county supervisors slash CEOs. They're looking at now recommending or possibility of reducing the number of local development areas, which is regions, we call them, okay? Down from six, which already is down from fifteen, to down to three to four, or four. So I will continue to share with you about that. I ran into Ethan Anderson in the parking lot yesterday. He actually has heard from, about this via those counties that have civil attorneys that work for them at a meeting late last month. And so we need to touch base on this. To say that some of the supervisors in the state are not happy about how this has been organized and therefore have shared with those that have a civil attorney on staff or on retainer because there's no information getting out there. I worked this weekend, both Saturday and Sunday, came in just to try and get the twenty-eight E draft for us brought up with all of the different requirements for what the Chief Elected Official Board, okay, the, right now, Region Eleven, right, the supervisors are going to have to do. And I'd just like to make a comment here that I think supervisors throughout the state are always happy to work on something that's so important. This is Title I funds, a few Title III funds. We're talking about money that goes to train workers, especially displaced workers, training young adults on careers, et cetera. And also, the Title III has to do with disabilities. And we're happy to do this, but the pace at what they're throwing this at, and now the possibilities of changes again tomorrow, and having to call in our resources of our county attorney's offices, we really are, I think, being asked to do a lot in a short time. And I'm very grateful to the supervisors who have gone before me, who started this, and I'm very grateful to the supervisors who have served before, Wayne, okay, out there, that it has been recognized for many years that this is a full-time job because, and we are recognized as that because, remember, most of the other supervisors in the state serve what is called part-time, and they're having to fit these meetings around their schedules, et cetera, while they're trying to bring in corn from the field, for example. So it's been a growth opportunity that we will rise to. Thursday, I'm in downtown Ames, first of all, for the Central Iowa Regional Transportation Planning Authority. And then I'm headed over to the finance meeting for the Central Iowa Workforce Development Board, which is our current board that we have right now. Then I'll be back here for the hunger collaboration, and on Friday's Courthouse Security Committee, which really, what we have left to do is a small piece, and I believe it'll be probably wrapped into the remodel that's going on, that they're discussing at the Justice Center right now. So I, I think this may be my last meeting to go to on this, because I think Joby and Micah Anderson from the Jail Department, I think that actually staff will probably be able to represent us, unless that the Judicial Department is requiring a supervisor to be there. So anyway, I'm done, thank you.
Okay. Yesterday, I spent most of the day at the Research Park at the Core Facility on a meeting on ARANET, which is A-R-A-N-E-T, Wireless Living Lab for Smart and Connected Rural Communities. It is a grant application that folks at Iowa State put in last year, are doing again to do a living laboratory for rural broadband system. Very interesting. It was a very interesting group of people there. They are asking us for a letter of support, so I'll give a little more information next week as I bring the letter of support there to you. I'm continuing to work on, I'll be at the department head's meeting this afternoon. Continuing, I will be gone tomorrow, taking tomorrow off to go to Des Moines for a service for Mark Cady. And I will be working Thursday on some Storycom issues with our representative for the working group, and Friday, attending Story County College Access Network Group. And Sandra King is going to go with me to that because she's expressed some interest there. It'd be good to have somebody else there to help with that project. It's in its early stages, but I think it's going to be very, very useful. Then next week, Story County Opioid Task Force, Monday, and we'll be interviewing again for somebody for a zoning board of adjustment. And then we will be back here again on Tuesday. And I was going to have a Storycom update scheduled for Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, but I'm going to take that on to the third.
Okay.
Since we're going to have a limited agenda on the twenty-sixth.
Thank you.
So that's all that I have. And any other announcements? Let me just let me think of mine. Okay, then, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Hiddens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin?